You're in a hurry, you go by that one.
Do you go?
Not in a hurry, go by hers.
Yeah.
Accuracy.
You'll be getting to quiet down or not?
Good morning. Today's Tuesday, February 7th, 2023.
Okay, let's get this thing fired up. Take care of county business, Madam Clerk.
Good morning. Today's Tuesday, February 7th, 2023, and this is a regular meeting of the Kings County Board of Supervisors. Due to issues arising from COVID-19, the board is using a WebEx teleconferencing format for today's meeting and may be participating via the World Wide Web. If you would like to make a public comment through the teleconferencing format today, please make sure that you are identified by name in the WebEx system. For those interested in commenting during unscheduled appearances at 9:00 a.m., please use the Raise Your Hand feature and wait to be recognized. You will be allowed up to two minutes for public comment. Members in the audience who have filled out speaker cards will be taken in the order they were received by the clerk, and online speakers will be taken in the order that they appear in the WebEx program, showing that their hand is up. If you wish to speak today and you have issues with the Raise Your Hand feature in WebEx, please physically raise your hand so that we may see you and wait to be recognized. Each vote today will be a verbal vote so that members of the public can hear how each board member has voted. After we have had a motion and a second regarding each item we are taking up today, there will be a roll call vote by district. Madam Clerk, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Joe Nevs.
Here.
Richard Valley.
Here.
Doug Verboon.
Rusty Robinson.
Here.
Richard Fagundes.
Here.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Now, we'd like to invite N.A.S. Pastor Sylvia Gastone from Quantanilla Church to lead us in the invocation.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. If you would all stand as you all are. Good morning. Let us bow our heads. Oh, God in heaven, we just thank you. I'm reminded this morning of your word that says, "This is the day that the Lord has made. I will be glad and rejoice in it." And Father, I realize that it is a choice for me, that despite what I am facing, my struggles, my trials, my day-to-day grind, that I can choose to be joyful in the day that you have made. Father, I pray blessings over each person in this room and all the staff members that they represent as they make decisions for all of the citizenry of Kings County. Father, I ask your blessings of wisdom, discernment, that they would have a heart in their decision-making that is like yours, particularly for those who are disenfranchised, the ones that you care about the most, the lowly, the homeless, the poor, the widows and the orphans, God, let them be at the forefront. Father, I pray your blessings on Chairman Vaie and all of our board members, Mr. Robinson, Verboon, Fagundes, and Nevs, Lord. I pray in every department that is represented here and every employee, I pray your blessings on them, God. Your blessings for health, for safety, Father. I pray you bless their relationships and their families. I pray that you bless their finances and their comings and their goings, Lord. I pray that they will put you first in everything in their lives. And we just thank you for all that you have given us, Lord. We do not take for granted that we are some of the most blessed people on this planet. We thank you, God, for who you are and for all that you do, in Jesus' name. Amen.
This time, I'd like to ask one of our law enforcement officers, Kings County Sheriff's Department, Mr. Nate Fiera, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good morning. Today, I have the honor of leading the Pledge of Allegiance and saying a few words about Selma Police Officer Gonzalo Carrasco. Thank you Supervisor Valley and the Board of Supervisors for this opportunity. On January 31st, Officer Carrasco was brutally murdered by a career criminal gang member who should have been serving a lengthy prison sentence behind bars. Twenty-four-year-old Officer Carrasco was an expectant father. He was a son of farm workers who loved his country and his community. This love drove him to pursue a career in law enforcement to serve and protect his community. He was killed doing just that. Officer Carrasco was what the American dream looks like. He was a Central Valley man. He was one of us. It would be wrong if I did not take this moment to demand change. Our leaders in Sacramento have passed one law enforcement reform bill after another and shoved them down our throats. To the contrary, they have not passed a single criminal reform bill. Rather, they have passed AB 109 and helped to pass Propositions 47, 57, and more. They have chosen to make life easier on criminals, which has placed all of us in danger. It is vital that we all demand our leaders in Sacramento to pass common sense reform that will keep criminals behind bars longer and provide the services while incarcerated to encourage them not to reoffend upon release. We should do this to honor Officer Carrasco and all of the men and women who wear the badge. Officer Carrasco's death cannot be in vain. His death serves as a unifying moment and gives us a renewed determination to fix the broken system. Now, please join me as we pledge allegiance to our great American flag.
Yeah. To the republic which is one nation, indivisible, with every chain of justice.
Thank you, sir, for the comments that wouldn't have been appropriate to start the meeting without recognizing the difficult time for the men and women of law enforcement in the surrounding communities. Thank you very much. At this time, we will go to unscheduled appearances. Any person may directly address the board at this time on any item on the agenda or any other items of interest to the public that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board. Two minutes are allowed for each item. Madam Clerk, we have anyone online?
The first speaker Supervisor Nevs would like to introduce.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Chair. I'd like to invite Paul up and to introduce himself. He's taken over the helm of the Southport Kings GSA. He started last week on the first, and so he's hit the ground running, and I'm very pleased and honored to introduce Paul to you.
Good morning, sir. Welcome. Good morning, Chairman Vaie and Supervisor Nevs and fellow County Board of Supervisors and public at large. My name is Paul Stiglich. I am the new General Manager for the South Kings Groundwater Sustainability Agency. That's a mouthful, I realize that. This agency came about in 2014 due to two Assembly Bills and a Senate Bill that addressed the need for better management of the groundwater throughout the state of California. This agency that I represent will be addressing those needs here in Kings County in collaboration with others that are doing the same thing. This will be no easy task as there are many competing interests, both from the municipal and agricultural area and private sectors. I bring to this organization 30 years' experience in public policy development, technical abilities, and groundwater treatment for gross contamination. And I really am excited to be here. This will be an arduous task. It will cross county boundaries, and so the cooperation of everyone will be much appreciated. And I thank you very much for your time, and I'm looking forward to working together with Supervisor Nevs and the rest of you. And if you have any questions, please feel free to forward those to Joe, and those will get back to me, and we'll work together on those issues. Thank you very much, and have a good day.
Thanks. Thanks Supervisor Nevs.
The next speaker is Heather Silva.
Good morning.
Good morning, Chairman, members of the board. Heather Silva with Public Health. I wanted to bring up Zarina Marisseigan this morning. We've been in the process of recruiting a Nursing Division Manager as Nicole Fisher left the end of last year, and that's a really hard recruitment to fill. So we are very grateful that Zarina applied internally. She's been with our county since 2011. She's worked with home visitation, TB case management. She was a foster care nurse with Human Services for many years. In the last two years, she was supervising public health nurse over our maternal-child and adolescent health division. So she has a lot of public health experience. She has great relationships with multiple county departments, and we're very excited to have Zarina as our new Nursing Division Manager.
Thank you.
Thank you. Very good. You remember how to sharpen the needles? That previous health director was, yeah, he was big on that. How to save the money.
We have anyone else in speaker cards?
The next speaker is Scott Garrison.
Morning, sir.
Morning, gentlemen. I'm just here for a quick introduction. I'm Scott Garrison, Captain for Kings County Fire. I'm the new union president. So we'll be seeing each other quite a bit, I'm sure, as our union's getting ready to start negotiations. And I just want to make one more introduction. I also brought with me Vice President, go here, hiding from me, Captain for Station 5 Armada, so.
All right, gentlemen.
Thank you. Thank you for the heads up.
You have any questions, you can go ahead and let us know.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk?
That's all the written, or all the speaker cards that I have. I have no written correspondence, and it doesn't appear anyone online has their hand raised.
Okay. Is there anyone in the chambers that'd like to make an unscheduled appearance? Want to welcome, I just see Mayor of Avenel, Mr. Avro Preciado just joined us, and City Manager, Mr. Anthony Lopez. Welcome. Okay, then we will close out unscheduled appearances. We'll move on to the next item, which is Approval of the Minute. A, Report out a closed session from regular meeting for January 31st, 2023. Counsel, anything to report?
There were no decisions to report. However, I would like to publicly note that the agendized workers' compensation case was pulled prior to discussions.
Okay, thank you. So Chair, will you entertain a motion on that? To accept that? Or?
I don't believe there's a, this is for reporting out, no more.
Thank you. Thank you, Counsel. We'll move on to Item B, Approval of the Minutes from the regular meeting for January 31st, 2023. And there was no questions. The Chair, will you entertain a motion?
Second.
Verboon. Motion by Fagundes, second by Verboon. Madam Clerk?
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Hi.
Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Richard Fagundes.
Item passes in favor, with five in favor. That takes us to the Consent Calendar. We have a number of items on consent, and if the board has no questions or comments on the consent calendar, Chair will entertain a motion.
I'm making motion to approve the consent counter presented.
Thank you. Motion by Verboon, second by Robinson. Madam Clerk?
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Hi.
Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes.
Consent calendar passes, five in favor. When I moves on to regular agenda items, the first item, A, comes from the Job Training Office with Julieta Martinez and Laura Magania. Good morning. Would you like to present your item?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, other members of the board. Laura Magania, Foregrab Manager here from the Job Training Office. Today, I present to you a contract with the County of Stanislas for the Regional Equity and Recovery Partnership Grant. The Kings County Job Training Office and the County of Stanislas are entering into an independent contractor agreement to address the occupational skills gap and create quality jobs in the San Joaquin Valley and associated counties. Under the Regional Equity and Recovery Partnership Grant, the San Joaquin Valley and Associates received funding from the California Workforce Development Board and chose Stanislas County Workforce Development as the administrator with the Job Training Office as a contractor for Kings County. This contract would provide a reimbursement to Kings County Job Training Office in the amount of $131,342 for paid work experience to individuals attending industrial maintenance training. So today, we're asking that the board authorize the Economic and Workforce Development Director to sign the agreement with the County of Stanislas to implement the Regional and Recovery Partnership Grant for Kings County retroactively December 1st, 2022 through September 30th, 2025.
Thank you. And with that presentation, we'll take up the adoption of the budget change as well. Right? Any questions or comments from the board?
If there are no questions or comments, I'll move as presented.
Nev, seconds.
Motion by Verboon, second by Nevs. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Hi.
Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes.
Item passes, five in favor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item B comes from the Probation Department. Good morning, sir. Would you like to present your item?
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Board and Mr. Chairman, Mark Sertier here, Deputy Chief with Probation. I'm here to discuss the Youth Programs Facilities Grant, also known through Senate Bill 823. I'm here as, asking for the board to approve an agreement with Accurate Controls to provide upgrades to the already established video, audio, and door control system, which is located in the Kings County Juvenile Center. And I'm asking that to be retroactively effective through October 21st, 22 through January 31st, 2024. There is no fiscal impact to the County General Fund as funding has already been approved by the board, set back on May 10th, 2022. Total cost for the installation for the camera system, viewing monitors, and upgrades to the current control panel is $232,200. All funds will be paid using funding pursuant to Senate Bill 823 with the approval of BSCC and for our receipt of the Senate Bill 823, the grant in the amount of $167,529. And that balance will be paid through the YOBG grant in the amount of $64,671. And this agreement has been reviewed by County Council and approved as before.
Is that all, Mr. Serta?
Yes, sir.
Thank you for the information, the presentation this morning. Any questions or comments from the board?
There's no question or comment. I'll move approval as presented.
Second.
Motion by Verboon, second by Fagundes. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Hi.
Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes.
Item passes, five in favor. Thank you, Mr. Serta.
Thank you.
Item C comes from Public Works Department this morning. Mr. Cabrera, good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Mitchell Cabrera, Chief Engineer with the Public Works Department. The first item we have before your board this morning is a request to award the construction contract to Harris Enterprises, Harris Development Corp., which is doing business as Harris Enterprises. This construction contract is for the site improvements at Hickey and Burris Park. On October of last year, 2022, your board approved the advertisement of the project. The plan specs and estimate package was approved. On November 4th, the department received three bids that were responsive. Three of those bids were reviewed, and the low bid was Harris Enterprises for $92,470. This project is 100% funded through the Prop 68 funding, a local match through a foundation, and then also portions of it from the general fund. Work is expected to start hopefully by the end of February, and I believe there was a 40 working day estimate, so plan to be done pretty quick with this one. The project is to add new ADA-compliant concrete sidewalks in both parks, new curb ramps, and also it includes some demo removal and replacement of ADA parking stalls at both of the parking lots at the parks. So we request that the board approve and sign the contract for construction. And if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
That's good information, sir. Appreciate it. Any questions or comments from the board?
Don't move.
Motion by Fagundes, second by Robinson. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Hi.
Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes.
Item passes, five in favor. Thank you. You have another item you'd like to present this morning?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. The second item is a request for your board to approve the plans and specifications and also authorize Public Works Department to advertise the Kettleman City State Route 41 pedestrian crossing and pathway improvements project, also known as the ATP, the Active Transportation AC Pathway in Kettleman City. This project was originally advertised in the middle of 2021, but due to some encroachment permit issues with Caltrans, Public Works had to make some changes, work with our consultant. So we're back before your board to approve the new set of plans to go out to construction. The project is 100% funded through the ATP, the Active Transportation Program, and the scope of this project is essentially a six-inch-wide hot-mix asphalt pedestrian pathway running north and south on the shoulder of State Route 41. Estimated cost is around $312,000, and bid opening is scheduled, if approved, first week of March, March 3rd. Expected completion mid-June to early July of this year. So if you have any questions on this project, we'd be happy to answer them as well.
Thank you. And did you go, Verboon? Any information on the crosswalk as well and the lights?
Okay, yes. Thank you for mentioning that. Part of the scope is the AC, the hot-mix asphalt pathway, and also upgrades to the existing crosswalk along 41. It will include the rectangular rapid flashing beacons to kind of make the visibility clear for the traffic that pedestrians are crossing.
Thank you. And a push button as well, right?
Yes.
To, once someone hits that button, it activates the beacon?
Yeah, so part of the Caltrans comments included some changes to the push button. They wanted ADA-compliant push button as well as touch-free. So we've looked into that and spec that in the project, so.
Thank you. Appreciate it. I know it's going to add beautification to the community as well. It's just one of the aspects of the project, and I know that you and the staff have been working on this for a long time. So appreciate it. Does the board have any comments or questions on the project?
Yeah, I got a question.
All right, Verboon.
So on the crosswalk, the activation of the light, is that something that we have, we'll have a list of how many times it's used over the years? In the future, or just a light switch that you push a button on?
We didn't look into if it can keep track, but we can reach out to some of the suppliers and the consultant to see if that is an option that we'd be interested in and if it's available by the supplier.
Yeah, how much it's been used, you know. That'd be nice to know. Thank you.
Super, Robinson?
So just for clarity, because I wasn't here for a lot of those conversations, but this is one component of the bridge or independent of?
This is independent of the pedestrian overcrossing bridge. This was an application that the county submitted for the ATP, Active Transportation Project. I believe the original plan was for sidewalks throughout Kettleman City. Given the existing drainage condition, that wasn't allowed by Caltrans. Instead, the asphalt pathway was a proposed alternative, and that was accepted. But the design for the pedestrian bridge will be presented before your board end of this month. I think the 28th, we're trying to get on calendar.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments to this project?
If there's no question or comments, I'll move approval as presented.
Motion by Verboon.
Nev, seconds.
Second by Nevs. Thank you. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Hi.
Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes.
Item passes, five in favor. Thank you, sir. That takes us to Item D, comes from Administration this morning. Mr. Hill, would you like to present the item?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Go ahead, Matthew. I'm just going to tee it off.
Oh, okay. I was like, is it? Is that one too early or no?
Before your board today is consideration to adopt a resolution continuing the drought, local emergency declaration, and Mr. Matthew Boyett is going to present this item.
Perfect. Thanks. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Matthew Boyett, Kings County Administration. So we, I've been before your board several times over, you know, the back end of this past year to adopt resolutions continuing to declare local emergency due to drought conditions. That resolution has to be reviewed and reassessed every 60 days. So I'm before your board this morning requesting to adopt a continuing resolution to, you know, to continue this trend. And I know that we've had a lot of wet weather here recently over the last several weeks, atmospheric rivers. We have above-average snow melt. But the state still remains cautious of the looming drought. And, you know, they're still warning that we had similar weather last year. You know, we're at the very beginning of the wet year, so this is not uncommon for us to see. You know, they're worried about the drastic swings from when we have the extreme hots to the extreme colds and how quickly this, you know, historic snowpack can melt very rapidly. So, and there's many drought indicators on the state website that still shows Kings County is still in a severe to moderate drought condition. So that long-term outlook hasn't changed, and, you know, a few weeks of wet weather is not going to cure our multi-year drought that we have in the county. So with all that, you know, we're going to continue to monitor the weather. We're going to continue to monitor the snowpack as the state does, and we'll, you know, reassess the resolution accordingly. But for now, that's what's before your board this morning. So with that, that's my presentation. I'll answer any questions.
That, any questions or comments from the board on the resolution?
No, I'll make a motion to approve as presented and pray for rain.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Nev, seconds.
All right. Does that include the prayer part of the motion, too?
Uh, yeah. More common sense than Sacramento. Prayer helps a lot, but.
Prayer come for me is desperate.
Exactly. It's pretty desperate, but. All right.
We can get it.
Exactly.
All right. Thank you. So we have a motion by Verboon and a second by Nevs. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Hi.
Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes.
Item passes, in favor. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll continue on with Administration, Mr. Hill and Domingo Cruz.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll be presenting this item today. Mr. Cruz is not available. Every year, Kings County prepares an update of its Legislative Advocacy Program, known as the Legislative Platform. The Legislative Platform outlines a board's work plan to advocate for various concerns of local significance regarding legislative decisions being made at the state and federal level. It also allows the county to move swiftly on items when they're identified and when they are within the platform. This year, staff from Administration Office, specifically Domingo Cruz, has worked hard with our departments and both of our state and federal lobbyists to prepare this document for the county. Mr. Cruz presented this item last week on January 31st in a study session. Since that time, there's been some minor suggested changes that add some clarity and really made things a lot more streamlined by Mr. Nevs. Those changes have been incorporated and are in your packet in the redline version. They weren't really substantive to change the overall makeup of the legislative platform. At this time, I'd like to thank Mr. Cruz, the departments, our state lobbyist, Chris Com, and our federal lobbyist, Paragon. And this concludes my report. I'm happy to answer any questions. We're looking for board adoption of the Legislative Platform today.
Thank you, sir. Any questions or comments from the board?
No, I just want to appreciate the editorial changes and thank you for that. And with that, move for adoption.
Thank you. Motion by Nevs.
And I'll second, and I'll make sure that Rusty delivers this on his first trip back to DC next week.
Second.
Away outside while you do the work. But that's not going to be the first time.
Second by Verboon, and thank you, gentlemen, for taking the time to go represent us in DC as well. Okay, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Hi.
Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes.
Item passes five in favor. Thank you. That takes us now to board member announcements. Uh, Supervisor Nevs, would you like to kick it off?
Good. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I had to leave last week, so this, uh, report period covers a couple of weeks. Um, at the Kings Western Recycling, uh, monthly meeting, uh, we received all the operational reports and continue to deal with high-speed rail on a property sale, and despite their high-speed rail being part of their name, they certainly don't move very fast, so we continue to work with that. The successor agency for the dissolved redevelopment agencies also had a meeting. Um, we approved all of the recognized obligation payment schedules, the ROPS, um, and will continue to, uh, dissolve these, uh, organizations as, as some of those, uh, obligations go away. Uh, at the CART meeting, uh, we received a clean financial, uh, audit on operations, uh, continue to, uh, uh, move towards, uh, electrification with the approval of, uh, Southern California Edison Charging Ready Transportation Program and charging stations, uh, with a green commuter, uh, van pool, uh, providing, uh, Teslas, uh, part of the fleet, uh, Tesla Model X and Y, and, uh, they seat up to seven people, but I'm not sure how big those people are.
Little people.
Yeah, must be little people, because, yeah, seven people in a Tesla seems to be shoulder to shoulder, but we'll see how that works. They also have a, uh, EV Star that has a seating capacity of, um, ten. So, you know, again, I don't know at what size that, uh, people, but, uh, bodies-wise, that's what they're approved for. Uh, they must be mat-sized or something, yeah, 'cause they... At the Association of Governments, uh, we approved the CART, uh, fixed route study. Uh, we made appointments to the Transportation Advisory, uh, Council, um, and we also discussed, uh, withdrawing from CalVans. And just to give you a little bit of history, Mr. Chair, um, Kings County started the van pool program twenty-five years ago. Um, in fact, it was, uh, twenty-five years that the Corcoran State Prison came online in February of, um, nineteen ninety-eight, and, uh, there was a request from a person in Visalia that wanted to ride from Visalia to the Corcoran State Prison. Um, it took us a couple of years, uh, working on van pooling. Uh, in the meantime, unfortunately, a tragic, uh, accident happened on the west side that killed thirteen farm workers, so we div- kind of divided it up between a van pool that would traditionally go from, from someone's house or a parking lot to a, a fixed bricks and mortar, to, uh, expand that to be able to take farm workers to a, from their home to a work site that may not be the same work site, um, in, in any given time. So, we expanded it out, um, and, and aimed at kind of splitting it off and having two different operations, regular traditional van pool and the, and the ag industry transportations. We kicked that off in two thousand and one. It was a very slow start, um, starting out with one van. Uh, the next, by the next year, we had a hundred and eighty, so, uh, it, it expanded very rapidly. A couple of years left, uh, two thousand and seven, we were up to two seventy-five. Again, it was a very difficult concept to sell to agriculture, both employers and employees, uh, because it was tied to ag, uh, transportation, farm labor transportation, um, so we had a lot of work to do between the Department of, uh, Transportation, Labor Board, um, and we continue to fight those battles, uh, even today. Um, by two thousand and twelve, uh, there were three hundred and five vans, uh, in, in the fleet, and, uh, CART then separated and CalVans was developed, and CalVans, uh, took that fleet up to eight hundred and fifty vehicles, um, operating in sixteen different counties, sixteen, seventeen different counties, and, um, we've kind of been sitting there, uh, ever since. Um, if you, as you can imagine, an organization that big with that many jurisdictions is very difficult to manage and, and, uh, uh, and control. Um, at, at one time, Kings County had sixty vans that were located, um, either started or ended in Kings County, um, and unfortunately, last year, uh, that number dropped to thirteen. So, we felt that it was important that we get back into the van business and try to get those numbers back up. Van pooling is an excellent way to move people around in what today's modern transportation likes, um, smaller groups, uh, volunteer drivers, gets you where you want to go, um, you have butts in the seat, and it's a very efficient means of transportation, and so it's real good. But the other part of it is that because it's so efficient, it brings a lot of federal dollars into those membership jurisdictions. And, um, over the years, Kings County has made anywhere from an extra million-two to two-point-three or four million dollars. Um, so when you drop off on vans, you drop off on mileage, your, uh, revenue goes down, and then that affects all of the cities because that's what keeps the dollars coming in through the road tax and helps our transportation dollars, um, a, a great deal. So, we did submit a letter to, uh, go ahead and separate from CalVans. Um, we, we have made a deal with, uh, Enterprise and Green Commuter, so you see some of those green commuter vans, and then we'll go ahead and introduce the, um, the Teslas, um, as well as some other, uh, vehicles in, uh, both electric, um, bi-fuel, um, uh, powered units, so that's kind of where we're at, you know, today. Um, CalVans has lost a couple of counties with Kern and Santa Barbara, uh, separating out in the past, and, uh, we certainly want to wish them well. They certainly have done a great job, but, um, I think it's time that Kings County, uh, starts controlling its own fate again and get back into the van, um, uh, business, and we're gonna try to do it, um, again, um, you, you know, with the same basic principles we had, uh, twenty-five years ago, and try to make it, uh, work and to the benefit. Uh, CalVans is working with sustainable, uh, communities and self-help enterprises and helping, uh, affordable housing. Um, I'm not sure we want to get into that business, but, um, with, that's, that's where I think CalVans will still remain active in the county. Um, they have a legal opinion that they, once we separate, that they can't function in the county. Uh, that's not our position. That was never our position, uh, but they have, uh, they were gonna leave the, uh, the, um, complex over here, uh, this year, but, uh, since we've taken this action, they've moved to, uh, get out by March.
Sure.
So, um, though, that, um, property will be available, and I think, uh, Public Works is already working on a succession plan for, uh, for that area. Um, it's, it's been a good ride the last twelve years or so with, uh, CalVans, but I just think it's, uh, time that we get back, um, back and, and focus on what we need to be doing locally. Um, at that meeting, we also approved the Regional Housing Needs, uh, Allocation Plan for the next ten years. Uh, the numbers came in, nine thousand housing units in the next ten years, nine hundred a year. Um, we've never done that in the past. I don't see, because of water conditions, um, high, uh, uh, high-interest rates, inflation, I'm just not sure we're ever gonna meet those goals. And to tell you the truth, that wasn't the high set, and it wasn't the low set, it was kind of the medium, um, number that we arranged to, but it's still an awful big number. So, we'll see how that works out and plays out in the future. Uh, Kings County Master Plan for, uh, Aging continues to meet, uh, reviewed some of the target groups and focus areas, uh, some of the intergenerational, uh, households that have two and three generations living in them, uh, was kind of a shock to some of them on the committee, and I just always thought that that was part of our community. There are many, um, you know, um, housing units that have two and three generations, and I didn't see it that, um, that uncommon, uh, but, uh, we're gonna continue to do that. Uh, we did hire Paul also, so thank you, Paul, there, for being here, taking time out of your busy schedule. Uh, he hit the ground running, and we certainly appreciate that, so thank you. Uh, attended the, uh, San Joaquin Valley Regional Planning Agency, uh, Pl- Policy Committee, uh, virtually. They're continuing to work on the Valley Voice Trip on March twenty-ninth, and, uh, they're gonna focus mainly on transportation, um, and then they're trying to do another focus outreach on water. And so, updates on state highways, Valley Trade Port project, uh, continues to move even though they changed, uh, the, uh, name of it, and, uh, high-speed rail, again, sure doesn't meet up to its high, high-speed, uh, standards, but they continue to share. Um, and then congratulate Doug Verboon. I, he was, uh, vice pren- vice chair of...
Vice Chair on Amtrak.
Amtrak, so if you have any complaints, complain to Doug. He's appreciated. He will, uh, very, very rapidly take care of it, unlike Doug.
You know, I ride the train, and then they find out who I am, and I can't rest.
You can't ride it?
Stop. The conductor goes by, and he, "You know what you guys gotta do here?" And he comes back, and, you know, I think about that. You probably do something different here, and then they send the next guy down there, and I go, "Oh, my God," all day. It's too information, and I appreciate it.
Yeah. No. And certainly want to wish you well. I think Amtrak is a neat way to, um, to, you know, to travel. Um, I wish I could talk my wife into going more without me.
Well, we got away with it, yeah. Cafe car is gone, so that...
I know.
That's a bad...
But she can pack a lunch. I, I'll pack her a lunch if she wants to go.
Yeah, tell us about that on your report.
Yeah, yeah.
Car gone.
Uh, attended the Knights of Columbus Dinner, uh, celebrating Sailor of the Year. Uh, this was a neat, uh, uh, event, the fourth degree patriotic, uh, degree of the, uh, Father Dade Assembly of Knights of Columbus with over a hundred and thirty officers and enlisted personnel, um, and it was a great evening, certainly want to thank them for the invite. Continued to announce, uh, basketball at West Hills College, uh, had a great time, uh, doing that. Uh, Kings County Behavioral Health Board had a special meeting on Monday, the thirtieth, uh, with the presentation of the Data Notebook, and the Data Notebook is a tool developed by California, talking about all the, uh, behavioral health planning, uh, councils, gathering information about counties and local jurisdictions, and then we also received a, uh, update, as you can remember, uh, the Children's System of Care has evolved a little bit, and we continue to make that, uh, those, those changes and, uh, memorialize those, uh, that service. Had a chance to, uh, meet and review the existing hemp ordinance. We do have a hemp ordinance, uh, growing, um, and there might be some, uh, adjustments, and certainly want to thank staff for getting together and, and talking about that. I want to thank the chair for allowing me to attend the, uh, Corcoran Annual Dinner, acknowledging, uh, the junior women and, uh, man of the year in Corcoran. Had a great time, great meal, uh, wonderful, um, uh, event, and thank you for, uh, allowing me to do that.
Thank you for doing that, sir.
And then, uh, attended lunch with Jeffrey and Harold to talk about Calviva's, uh, presence and focus in Kings County, and that was one of the efforts, uh, on the, um, uh, on the, uh, uh, previous item on the legislative platform. Um, in law enforcement, they've allowed now, uh, for inmates in the last ninety days to become, um, uh, covered by insurance, uh, through Medi-Cal, hopefully through a managed care system like Calviva. Um, I would really like to expand that and have them covered upon in, intake, and whether it's when they, uh, walk onto the facility or when they get sentenced and remain in the custody of Kings County, either one, but, uh, Rusty, I think that would probably be a good discussion point, uh, because I think if we can get those inmates covered through some kind of a Medi-Cal managed care, um, uh, when they come in, would, would certainly help the county and help that individual, um, both. So, um, that's one of the changes that I kind of, uh, requested that Dom was able to, uh, incorporate into the legislative platform. So, with that, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thanks, Supervisor Nevs, for that helpful information. Appreciate you. Supervisor Fagundes, anything to add?
Thank you. Yeah, I met with Jeff Gardner this last week, KCEO, and, um, trying to give me a heads-up on, they want to build a new pantry kitchen and utilize some of their services, and I think it's a good idea, but on the other hand, you need to know where to put this, and he is really working hard to try to put this in perspective and put it in the right place. So, he discussed that with me, and, and, uh, a lot of good ideas, and, uh, but he's, it's gonna take some time to do this, but on the other hand, he's doing it, uh, very carefully. It's in the right place for, for the homeless and, and, and we're helping, give people.
Sure.
And then, uh, had the crab feed in late in this last week, was very successful. My crab dough. I had chicken.
Crabbing, again.
No, and with that, uh, it was, it was good, and there's a lot of other fundraisers going on around.
No, we're doing, uh, what little I can help this last, tonight, we're doing some meat in, uh, deep pit meat for Portuguese Celebration fundraiser. Portuguese are always celebrating. That's what keeps this country going. Food. No, it's... Everybody's trying so hard to get, keep their organizations afloat, and it's getting harder and harder, so, but I give them credit for trying.
That's right. Good work.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Supervisor Fagundes. Good work. Supervisor Verboon?
Not much to report on, just other than we did the hemp ordinance, talked about that for about an hour or two, and, uh, you know, Amtrak stuff, that's old news, that was about a couple weeks ago. Did away with a cafe car, so, uh, it was not cost-effective. You have to load the car up with fresh food, you get, on the start of the day, end of the day, you throw it all away if it's not used, there's no avenue to reuse it, so it got too expensive. We're replacing it with vending machines and, uh, getting some complaints, so hopefully we get the ridership back up and, and reintroduce the cafe car sometime sooner. Uh, Capital Quarter has cafe car, but they have a lot of riders that are, uh, use that train every single day and depend upon it, and our route changes, you know, dramatically, so. Took another trip around the sun, I'm another year older.
Hey.
Throw the dementia and Alzheimer's setting in.
Getting closer.
Happy birthday.
I'm almost Joe's age.
Happy birthday.
I survived, yeah. All I got to report.
So, you can't, you can't even get a glass of wine or a beer on the train anymore?
You can bring a bottle.
You can bring a bottle, yeah. No Bloody Marys.
No Bloody Mary. All right.
Social Security age.
Thanks, Supervisor Verboon. Supervisor Robinson, you got anything?
Happy belated birthday there, Supervisor Verboon. Uh, Thursday, I met with Jeff Gardner, uh, also as Supervisor Fagundes, and we discussed homelessness and, uh, food distribution, that, that nature, and he's trying desperately to find an appropriate place for that. Friday, uh, met, uh, with, uh, Mr. Hill and Ms. Martinez. We went to, uh, Armona, and we, we, uh, looked at, uh, Armona Union Elementary School. We met with the superintendent to, uh, try and look at upgrades for Armona Park out there. And yesterday, I met with Bishop Joseph Brennan in Fresno, uh, on homelessness and food distribution as well, um, and he told me that they just opened up, uh, their, their church in Visalia, which he says is the, the largest parish in, uh, in the United States. So, um, that, that just opened up recently. Also, like to, uh, like to say good job to Public Works, uh, and Mr. Hill for, I don't know what they refer to it as, but we call it Operation Blue Light. Uh, oh, last weekend, they, the county turned all the blue lights on, or we swapped the lights out with blue in recognition of the fallen officer. Nate, thank you, uh, fallen officer in Selma, so thank you.
Thank you, uh, Supervisor Robinson. Uh, I got a couple things I want to touch on. Um, this Thursday, uh, I'll be at Avonale City Council and, uh, working with, uh, Lisa Lewis from our Behavioral Health Department, coming back to follow up on a town hall that was held out there, uh, the community was asking about on those services, so there's gonna be some, uh, uh, good, it's gonna be positive reporting out, Mr. Mayor, come, uh, Thursday, so, uh, thank you, Anthony, for getting us on agenda so quick, too. So thank you, Anthony, for getting us on agenda so quick, too. Look forward to being back out there. The other thing, been spent a lot of time, priority for the first part of this year has been all the details to get to the unveiling of the Veterans Memorial. That the county is in partnership with High Speed Rail and City of Corcoran. And we're going to release the, the date for that ceremony this week. So just a lot of work from working on the program to outreach, to raise a profile of that project and make sure we have a good turnout and working with the base, just seeing that we can get a flyover for that day as well. So there's a lot of details going into this, and it's taken up a lot of time working from home on that project. One of the things, though, interesting, and a lot of folks probably heard it on the news the other night, but when you talk about the flyovers, Super Bowl Sunday, all five pilots are going to be women aviators for the first time. And so this year marks the 50th anniversary of women as aviators in the, in the US Navy. And I think that's something I like to ask staff, and maybe we can get some help from Mr. Howe to reach out to the base and see if we can't have those, those pilots here at some point. And the board can entertain a, a resolution or something nice to mark the 50-year anniversary as it relates to our relationship with NES Lemoore as well. And be an honor to have those, those pilots here, too. Maybe give us their perspective on the flyover. So look out for them, those two pilots this Sunday coming up. So other than that, last thing is I know Jose Ramirez is fighting in March, March. And he reached out and has offered free tickets to veterans. So Scott Howe is, has, is working with that and getting the word out. So Scott, you got any tickets left for veterans still? Can reach out to you? All right. Well, thanks, sir, so to the community, too. Make sure you spread the word with your family and any veterans you know to go support and have some entertainment that night. So with that, any last things from the board? Okay, let's go to Mr. Hill and staff for our board correspondence and upcoming agenda items.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For board correspondence, your board received an invitation from the California Public Utilities Commission to attend inequity initiatives and Clean Energy Access Grant Program webinar on February 15th from 10:00 AM to 11:30 AM. Your board received a notice regarding Bulletin 132-19 from the Department of Water Resources, California State Water Project. For upcoming events, the Kings County Library will hold its mobile library ribbon cutting ceremony on Wednesday, February 8th from 3:30 to 5:00 PM at its Hanford branch located at 401 North Doughty Street. The event is free and open to the public. The UC Master Gardeners of Tulare and Kings Counties will be holding an introduction to gardening, Central Valley style. This will be, this will provide information on how to garden for our local climate. They will discuss plant selection, drip irrigation, mulching, sustainable water-wise yards and other topics. The class will be held at the Hanford Branch Library at 401 North Doughty Street on Saturday, February 18th from 1:30 to 3:00 PM. It's a free event, open to the public. The Hanford Toy Anime Comic Con will take place on Sunday, February 19th from 11:00 AM to 4:00 PM at the Hanford Fraternal Hall Association located at 1015 North 10th Avenue in Hanford. This is a family-friendly event. Tickets are $8, and kids 10 and under are free. There will be a cosplay costume contest at 2:30 PM. The 2023 Hanford Chamber of Commerce will host its chamber dinner on Thursday, February 23rd at 5:30 PM at the First Baptist Hanford located at 9125 13th and a half Avenue in Hanford. There will be a catered dinner. Members will receive two complimentary tickets, and additional tickets can be purchased for $20 each through the chamber. For upcoming agenda items, Administration has four items. Consideration to approve two agreements with Sound Contracting. Consideration to approve a federal earmark project funding request. Consideration regarding jail-based competency treatment and presentation of the employee of the fourth quarter for 2022. DA has consideration regarding continued participation in grant programs. Public Health has two items. Consideration regarding Calviva Health sponsorship for Kings County WIP program. And consideration to adopt a resolution proclaiming February 2023 as National Children's Dental Health Month. And Public Works has consideration regarding Kettleman City Pedestrian Bridge Project. And then finally, I would just like to close out by thanking staff from Public Works on their quick work to stand up Operation Blue Light. We made that decision at 1 o'clock, and they were done by 4:00. It was great work, and the campus looks amazing for it. We will leave that lit until that officer is laid to rest. That was also coordinated with the City of Corcoran. They reached out and indicated they would be doing something, so we jumped on board.
Good work. Good work, sir. Mr. Hill, did you touch on the tomorrow's conference?
I did not. So there's a city-county conference.
And even in stereo.
That's being held tomorrow night at Lake Bottom in Corcoran. The time, the start time is at 6:00, and it goes to 7:30.
All right. Thank you. We look forward to send down with all the city councils in Kings County tomorrow, and counties hosting. And a good, safe time. Thank you. Okay, with that, then we, the board takes up two matters as we go into closed session. Will be adjourned until Tuesday, February 24th, February 14th, 2023. So thank you, everybody. Actually, February 14th has been canceled. We are adjourned until Tuesday, February 28th. Because the 21st is canceled. Okay. Okay. We'll see you soon. Thank you.